Hi, Chris. Can you hear me? It's Dan. Randy Hofstadt, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hi, Randy. We'll get started here in a minute. We'll get here started shortly. Chris, can you hear me? No.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Hi, Chris. We'll need to have you be the chair tonight. The Max cannot make it, so...
Yep.
You can... We do have a quorum, so you can start at any time. The petitioner for the hearing is via Zoom too, just so you know, but they will be speaking first.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Dan, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, I had the wrong plug in, sorry. Good evening, everybody.
Hello, Chris.
So I will start this meeting off just as a reminder that due to the executive order, we have provided the ability to have individuals zoom into our meeting tonight as well as those who are present. I myself had to zoom in, so bear with me a little bit as we go along tonight. So I open the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for November 2nd, 2020, in place of the chair, and I ask for roll call.
Becker.
Here.
McMahon.
Here.
O'Flaherty.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Vice Chair Doe.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Maxwell, you have a quorum.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Any additions, dilations, or corrections?
I move approval.
I second.
So moved by Klein.
I second.
Seconded by O'Flaherty.
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. We have the approval of the October 19th, 2020 minutes. Any additions, dilations, or corrections? And if none, I'll take a motion.
I move to approve as written.
So moved by O'Flaherty.
Second.
Seconded by Wright. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. We have the public participation portion of our meeting. Anyone who would like to speak on anything that is not part of the agenda, we would welcome you to the podium. I cannot tell if there's anyone in the public.
There is nobody here for the public.
Okay. So we will move on to our new business item. We have a public hearing, a petition by Randy Hofstadt for a special use permit to establish a video gaming establishment in Prend's CJ's Gaming at 2022 Sycamore Road, and I open to the petitioner.
Hello, everyone. My name is Randy, and I'm the owner of CJ's Gaming here in DeKalb. Sorry, I'm unable to be there this evening. Working with three kids is not always easiest right now. So, just want to say currently my business, CJ's Gaming, is at 1406 B Sycamore Road, so it's just down the road from the new location that I'm proposing. And this evening, I'd like to request an approval of a special use permit to move the business up to 2022 Sycamore Road in DeKalb. CJ's is a gaming cafe, and we cater to all ages with a full menu and a kitchen, along with six machines. We also offer family dining, dartboards, a meeting place. We also furnish some board games for our younger people to do. A lot of people come in with their laptops, and we have a space for them as well to do those things quietly. And then also, at CJ's, we're very family-friendly when it comes to our employees and everybody else that comes in. We support the dart leagues, local and otherwise, and also local businesses. We also support the college and their students as we do employ college students and give them time to work on their schoolwork while they're not doing their other things here at CJ's. The special use permit would give me the ability to move the business down or up the road a bit. The property's bigger, therefore, I'll be able to expand it and make it more than CJ's already is, which I think would benefit both me as a business owner and CJ's as well. It would allow for more events and space for the things I already incorporate into my business, for example, dart leagues, family dining. I truly believe we'll be able to bring in our customers at the new location, and there are some slides that Dan had got together, and if you look at those, you can see it's a great location for a business model like ours, looking at everything surrounding. And like I said, we're already on Sycamore Road, so we're just moving up a little bit. And so we have, we'll have a separate room for all ages that includes dining, games, dartboards, and a meeting place. In 2019, we contributed more than $30,000 to the city of DeKalb, and in the last three months, CJ's has contributed over $8,000 to the city. So I really feel like the business does contribute to the city as well, and moving to this location would enhance that even more because it is a bigger, better location that we're able to do more. And we are, we were the top video gaming establishment in 2019 and currently, if you look at the numbers, which we pull up every month, and I believe it'd be a better fit, that location. Let's see here. And then I also want to bring up that right now, I mean, we're in a pandemic, everybody knows that, and things are very hard going for small businesses, and I want to assure you that we do work very closely with the CDC and the Health Department on their guidelines, and I can assure you that all the staff wears masks and everybody coming in, we make sure that all the customers wear masks. Right now, we can't have any bar service. We don't do a lot of outside dining, but we do allow customers to order and go with it. So we are keeping up with all of the standard CDC and Health Department guidelines, so just want to assure you that we're going to keep up with that because it is so important for a small business owner like myself to keep business going and a small city like DeKalb to keep going in these hard times. So, like I said, I would just like to ask for the approval of the special permit. That would be fantastic, I truly believe, and I just want to say thank you for letting me come in on the meeting and speak what I need to say. So I hope you guys have a great night, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Randy. So don't go anywhere until we're done, just in case we have some questions for you. So I'll turn over to the city for their report.
Thank you, Chair. You have a staff report in your packet, and if I can get the slides up again. As Randy mentioned, CJ's looking to relocate from 1406 Sycamore Road to this location at Greenwood and Sycamore Road. They're going to take up the first floor of the building, and there's actually two two-bedroom units on the second level of the structure. So they're taking over the first floor. It's a zoned general commercial in that district, a video gaming establishment, and there's a definition in UDO that means it's a standalone facility. Doesn't cover every type of video gaming. This is a video gaming cafe where the primary use is the video gaming. Of course, they have to have liquor sales too and some other accessory uses, but they're planning to move this location sometime by January 2021 from their existing location. Their proposed hours are matching what they want, which they're doing right now. That's listed in the report, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. Monday through Wednesday, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. Thursday through Saturday, and 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. on Sundays, and those are all in compliance with the liquor code of the city. Our liquor code, Chapter 38, has a limit of 10 standalone video gaming establishments in the city. With them just transferring or moving, we don't have to amend the municipal code to accommodate them. As Randy said, they are the largest net terminal income of any video gaming operation. That's certainly from January to September of this year. In the past years, they've been at the top or near the top every year. So they're high-producing revenue for the terms of video gaming establishments or any type of video gaming in the city. The UDO does require a minimum distance of 500 feet between the standalone video gaming establishments. From this proposed location on Sycamore Road, the nearest existing one is Lucky Poker at 1812 Sycamore Road. That's about 1,100 feet away, so well beyond the minimum separation required for these types of operations. As noted, there's a shared, as you can see here, with a parking overlay that was recently re-strived, what's shown in yellow is the current striping of the parking. The owner, Chad Bemis, also owns the property of the South, which formerly had a Hertz rental car business, and may have left. There's interest in internet auto sales at that location, which is a permitted use. So when CJ's first came in, I liked, I wanted to get the parking kind of straightened out, so the owner did provide a net square footage of the establishment, taking out the restrooms and storage, which is what we do with the parking requirements. We got that square footage and also added the two dwelling units on top, and also for the, did a rough estimate for the internet auto sales based on them. Looks like they will be going forward. They're not in there yet. So just with that, resulted in 11 required parking spaces, and there are 17 parking spaces provided on the site. So they do have adequate parking, and that will cover a little bit of storage area for the internet auto sales too, for some five or six vehicles to be stored on display at the site. In the report, I also listed a little history of our video gaming establishments. Maisies on South Fourth Street, approved in 2018, and the Chips ended up being called Chips at 122 East Hillcrest in 2019. Those approvals of special use permits had language, both of them, had limits on the, when alcohol sales could start, at 10:00 a.m., and also restrictions on the signage, that there could be no mention of gaming or liquor in the signs. Those were related to, both of those, we had some objection to both of those locations. On the South Fourth Street, if you recall, the ones that were on the commission of the school district and the daycare center nearby, and also some, a few objections for the one on Hillcrest. So those were put in at the commission's recommendation. The most recent one we had approved or reviewed about a year ago was 1704 Sycamore Road, Athena's Palace. They did not have any hour restrictions or signage restrictions. The commission thought in that particular case it was not warranted based on the location along Sycamore Road, and that there was really no objection to that use of that location. So I didn't make a, put in the recommendation any restrictions on that. It's entirely up to the commission, but felt with this location, there's no homes near this proposed location. There's no objections that were submitted to the commission. There's nobody here tonight objecting, so we didn't, I didn't feel that there'd be a need for that, but that's certainly, it's up to the commission on the recommendation you'd like to make regarding that of any conditions. There are two conditions recommended. One is a handicap sign needs to be placed in front of the existing handicap space on the site, and there's a trash dumpster behind the building that we're asking that to be screened within 30 days after approval per our UDO. All those conditions have been agreed to by the property owner, who'll be doing those improvements. With any special use, we have the findings of fact. For those, just going through those quickly, it's owned GC, the site. The property meets all the UDO requirements. It's well beyond the minimum separation requirement for video gaming establishments. The special use will not be detrimental to the surrounding area. It's mostly built up already, of course, with commercial, mostly commercial uses. In the past ones, we've had our police department take a look at these types of operations. They've indicated a couple situations that there's no demand for, additional demand for public safety at these video gaming establishments. They're pretty quiet, actually. And we're adding conditions to the site to make it, improve the appearance of it and to meet the UDO requirements. There's already adequate utilities to the site, adequate parking will be provided, and it will not be detrimental to the surrounding area. It will allow an existing video gaming operation in the city already. CJ's to relocate. It's a heavy revenue producer for the city in terms of the video gaming establishments, so we'd like to have that continue so that we generate, additional, continue to generate the sales tax and video gaming revenue for the city. So staff's recommending approval. I have a sample motion presented that approves the conditions in Exhibit A, and that just approves the floor plan, which was provided indicates that has to be built in that area shown on the floor plan. They, of course, have to obtain a liquor license through the city, comply with all state and local regulations for video gaming terminals, and the two conditions, placing the handicap sign where it's needed, and the screening the trash dumpster within 30 days after approval by the council. Certainly happy to answer any questions you may have. That's all. Thanks, Chair.
So Dan, you said there was no public, nobody from the public present. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So normally, we would open the public hearing and allow the public to speak, but given there is none, I'll turn it over to any questions that the commissioners have.
I have a question, Ron Klein.
Sure.
I'm just a little concerned about the parking situation. That building, as I understand it, has two, two-bedroom apartments upstairs, so there's going to be four or five people maybe there with cars. Then that little building's going to be rented out for a business that's next door. I don't know how many staff they may have. I drove in there the other day. It seems to me, even though it meets the basic requirements, it could be a little tight for parking, and where would the overflow go if there is more cars than that will accommodate? There's no on-street parking right there, it seems, and it's a kind of a dangerous corner in a way. I just wonder how that's going to be handled if necessary.
Is that addressed to the petitioner, or...
Pardon?
Who's the question addressed to? The petitioner, or...
Yes.
Okay, well, I, I'm, I know that CJ's usually does not have that many cars. We only have one employee on staff at a time, so that is one-employee car. And being that there's six machines, it's usually the extent of the cars. I don't know if there's a way to, you know, for the apartments, if the, if we can designate those specifically, and we will make sure that our customers do not park in those spots. I'm not sure how that, how that works exactly with this city, but that is an idea that I thought of right off the bat. And like I said, there's six machines. There's usually not more than six cars for CJ's because people usually come in pairs, so that's one car per a couple of people. Like I said, one person on staff. Someone may come over and drop off some food supplies, things like that, but I don't think that CJ's will take up that many parking spots, and I think if we could do something about designating the apartment parking spots based on the city guidelines, then I think that would help a lot.
And just to follow up, as I note in the report, we took our basic, our standards and our UDO and accommodated the parking for the two-bedroom apartments, which is two nav spaces for every unit there, and then the video gaming, it's one space for every 250 square feet of floor area. Net floor, that resulted in nine spaces, if I can get that image up, Jeff, of the park, or the slides up again. And then with the internet auto sales, that's why we wanted to kind of get the parking straight. So just based on the square footage, there's only two required parking, and then they have what would be allowed for the storage of any cars for display. So they'll have to stay within those limits. You can designate certain spaces, I guess, for certain operations if you want to make that a condition, but checking with the owner, discussing that, and looking at our requirements, we're comfortable there's adequate parking. They do meet the standards, so we couldn't ask for more. I didn't see a need. It's true on video gaming, there's only six machines in there and one employee, so they can't have a lot of, these uses at these other locations, Maisies and Chips, there's very little cars generated from, you know, traffic from this in terms of just number of cars, because there's limits on the machines that can be played. Nobody's going there just to drink liquor or anything. They're playing video games. With the limit on the terminals and the employee's usually one, there's really not a lot of traffic generated with these operations that we've seen from the ones that are already in the city.
Okay, anybody else?
I wanted to ask, I don't know if we've run across a mixed-use facility like this with residential and commercial with the, are there, we're not, there's no concern about, you know, children, residents?
There's a, they have separate entrances to the two. They don't, they, I think the, from Randy, you can enter the residence in the front only right the stairways?
Yes, correct.
Which you can access the gaming too, right? Or the first floor?
Yes, you're separate. And you can't access the, the upper apartments from inside of our building.
So, I mean, the owner has not indicated any concern. There's no requirement, but yeah, that's one of the first, or the only one I, where we have some residential mixed in with the video gaming, but there's a separate access for the, the one in the back goes straight to the first floor only, and the access, the apartments is from Sycamore Road only.
Okay. With the signage, did you say that the gaming couldn't be on the sign?
No, we had that as the, for Maisies and the one on Hillcrest. I'm not recommending it here, and we didn't do it for the last one we approved on Sycamore Road, Athena's Palace. It doesn't have any restrictions. It was kind of a commission's, they didn't feel that one that was warranted. And with this one with, there's no objections, there's no, it's along Sycamore Road, there's no homes near it. The other two, they had that restrictions on the hours, and the signage was the concerns by the school district for Maisies and the daycare center of, you know, conflict with students and that, so the commission put those conditions on there to kind of alleviate some of those concerns, but I didn't really see anything here that would warrant that, but that's a, up to the commission, if you want to add that or not.
Okay. And the, the, the small building that's attached to the lot, you said that that would be internet?
Yeah, internet auto sales is what's proposed. They haven't moved in yet.
Does that mean that won't be much traffic there? Won't be in and out?
Yeah, they sell through the internet, so it's not, like, we have, I think, at least one on East Lincoln Highway, internet auto sales, and it's very, it's, the cars are in display. There's very little traffic there I see at all, so they're not like a typical auto sales. We have people driving up, up there and looking. All the sales are through the internet and by appointment when you come and see them, so. And the gentleman I talked to said he's, only have five or six cars on display. He knows it's a smaller lot, but dislikes the location, so. And it's a permitted use in that district.
Okay, any, any else? Any other questions?
I have, not a concern, but sort of a question. I don't know that really it pertains much to your concerns, Randy, as much as it does to the landlords, but with operational hours till 1:00 a.m., I would wonder about the viability of there being apartments above your location, you know, with crowd and noise and, and things of that nature. Has, has the landlord addressed that with you at all? Have you guys discussed that?
Um, no, not that, not that we've talked about, no. And I mean, we have our hours so that we can, you know, within the guidelines, to be open as late as we're able to, but if that's something that we need to scale down based on the residents living above us, we will. We, you know, something that we always do is we always keep things quiet. Very low-key place, very comfortable, very homey. We don't let people be loud. If people get loud, it's like, no, you have, you have to leave. It's just, we monitor so very closely. That's another thing. The same with children. It's a family-friendly place, but children have to be supervised. There is no coming in and gambling and letting your children sit somewhere else, you know. Same with the residents living upstairs. Music is kept to a minimum if there's any on, if we have a football game on, kept down to the minimum. So we do do everything, even at our current location, to keep things down because we don't promote this big bar atmosphere to be loud and obnoxious, if you will. It's someplace gamers like to sit down and play and be quiet and left alone. So we do promote a more quiet setting, but if it's something that we're concerned about for the residents above us, then that's something I would, I wouldn't have a problem considering at all based on your recommendation.
Thank you. I have another, your timeline was January? Did, was it January you anticipate? Are you anticipating using that entire first level, Dan? All of that?
You're not sharing it with the psychic.
Psychic is gone.
No.
They're gone.
I mean, maybe, maybe I can get us all a deal on some readings before.
She saw it coming, yeah.
It's a good mix of use.
So I do have a question kind of based off of what Mr. Becker was asking. So in relation to any, even though you'll keep it at a minimum, I'm thinking maybe a little more over in the dart lane area. Is there, or have you looked into if there's any additional soundproofing that might be needed in the ceiling?
I have not, and I haven't thought of that. That's something I can definitely look into. I know that we have to have a drop ceiling. That's standard. So I'm not sure construction-wise, what we can put above that, you know, if it's just insulation-type thing, but I would be, I would be game to look into that. That's not a problem at all if that's something that would help.
And do you happen to know, like, if the area where you're putting your gaming machines and the dart lanes, are they under the bedrooms of the apart, how many apartments are in there? Two, you said?
There, yeah, there's two apartments. So there's one on each side. I'm not sure if they're directly above the, like, underneath of the bedrooms. I'm not sure exactly where everything is located, but I do know that the dartboards are on a separate side, and then the gaming is on a separate side, and we don't have people playing darts a lot of time. We'll have a dart league where it's, say, Monday, Wednesday, 7 to, you know, 9:30. So other than the dart leagues, when we're actually in those games, a lot of people don't play darts. They'll come in and play sometimes just to practice for the league, but it's usually just the gamers. And then the dart league, or the dartboard area is where we'll have the dining, so that's where tables and stuff will be, and that's a more quiet place.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, anybody else?
When you have dart league, how many people come for dart league?
Um, well, we just changed our dartboards, so it's a little different now, but we used to have the local dart alpha, and that was, that was like a Tuesday night male league, and, and then there was a co-ed, there was a co-ed league. So it was only two days a week, and if they have a bye, then they don't play that week. So I would say anywhere from one game a week, which would be anywhere from four to, four to eight people. So yeah, four to eight people twice a week, I would say confidently.
I think that's, that will be the time when you're going to have parking problems. If you have eight people in there playing darts, six people in there playing machines, and an employee, that's when you're going to be over.
Uh, yeah, quite, quite possibly. The only thing is, is a lot of people, I mean, sometimes the, the dartboards are full and the machines are full, but usually the people that play the darts play the machines when their turn is not up. So, I mean, I guess it, it just depends on the night, really, as far as how many people are in there, if it's... If it's, if we have six machines full and we have people in the dart room, or if the machines aren't full and we have people going back from the dart machines to the gaming machines.
So I guess we never did address, though, what would happen when there's, where would the overflow parking? If I tried to show up on a Tuesday night, where am I going to park, or what's going to happen? Are they going to park in the Arby's parking lot?
Arby's?
I'm not sure, actually. I haven't, I honestly haven't thought that far ahead as far as being an overflow. I've never encountered where we've had too many people for the parking spots. So I haven't encountered that at all before. You know, at our current location, we have a lot of parking spots, but there's only a few that are for CJ's alone. And those ones, if we have an event, we block off just four that we are able to, based on our current lease. You know, and then the other ones, if they're not specifically for a place, then I know people will use those. If they're noted for someplace else, then I know they don't park there, but I couldn't tell you where they go beyond that.
There are a couple of buildings just north, south, I guess that's south of there, maybe west. You know, RP lumber probably would be closed about the same time that this would be going on, so there might be, you know, maybe the ability to park there. There's a church there too, next to, between Arby's and RP, so maybe, you know, you probably have to just make sure there's no parking restrictions there for the business. But if this, if this is approved, maybe being neighborly and chatting with them prior to moving in, maybe a good idea to, just to establish that neighborly communication.
Yeah, I would be more than happy to go talk to them and ask them if they think it's okay to use their parking spots after hours, if that's okay with them. I'd be more than happy to, you know, set that up with them.
Okay, any other questions? I'm going to go ahead and close the public meeting, just as a formality, but we do still have time if there's any further questions from commissioners. And if not, then I'll be happy to take a motion when you're ready.
Based on the submitted addition, testimony presented, and findings of fact, I move the Planning and Zoning Commission forward its findings of fact and recommend to the City Council approval of the special use permit for a video gaming establishment at 2022 Sycamore Road per the conditions as indicated in Exhibit A of this report.
So motion's been made by Becker?
Second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Right.
Second by Wright? Okay. Second by Wright. Any further discussion? If not, I'll take a roll call.
Becker?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
O'Flaherty?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Vice Chair Doe?
Yes.
Chair Maxwell. Motion passes.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
So our next item on the agenda is reports.
Yes, thank you. Our next meeting is November 16th, and we have one, two public hearings related to existing, actually, U-Haul truck and trailer rental on Hillcrest. There's a tax amendment leading into that special use request to kind of clean things up, to get that conforming. So the two hearings that night. That meeting, the next meeting will be at the Police Department, at the same training room we had before. There's a council meeting, FAC meeting in this library room that evening. So again, at the Police Department on the 16th. I handed out to you the, the results of the city hall block rezoning, which was approved by the City Council on the 26th of October. And prior to that, the commission had a 3-3 tie vote recommending approval. So I just want to show you what the changes that were made between the commission meeting and the council approval. The applicant met with the property owners along Fifth Street that came into the hearing and took their comments, along with the commission's comments. So the plan was revised to have three buildings instead of four. They maintained the community garden area at the corner of the block there, and also reduced the units down from 76 to 57 units. Also, the elevations were changed, as you can see, incorporating some things from the previous submittal and feedback from the residents across Fifth Street. And both of those residents, the McNatts, and the, I think his last name was Sexton, were at the City Council meeting in full support of this request. So I just wanted to show the commission what the result was, that was, in terms of the plan elevations that was approved by the council at their last meeting. That's all I had.
Okay. If there's nothing else, it's good to see everybody, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
So moved by O'Flaherty? Second by Klein. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Two weeks.
You're welcome.